And I uh start this uh meeting of Borough Council, uh July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. We will start with Moment of Silence by myself. Um so I will keep it brief tonight. Um but I do want to talk about community and what it means to pull together. I heard about the fire at Broad Street Market this weekend, and it was inspiring to see how that community has come together. Um but not just the municipality that something happens in, but the greater region. Um from the firefighters and first responders who came out in the middle of the night across the area to tackle a huge emergency. And the leaders from business, industry, government, and beyond that see the barriers to starting back up quickly. And offer what they can to make things happen to support the folks affected. And the rest of the community, the people who love and care for these small businesses, the community that is created by these businesses. And by the supporters of them and the collective spaces is organic and grows in beautiful ways. Sometimes these unfortunate circumstances show these connections that are otherwise less understood or seen on daily. Um and I know that we've had our own struggles here in Carlisle and we will at some point again. Uh but it was very inspiring to see how um how broadly it was it was affected. People to their core and how they're coming out to ensure that this is not the end of that market. Um so I would just like to have a moment of silence to think about what you think about your community and how you can continue to support. And now the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Uh and Madam Secretary, the roll call, please.
Mr. Ramsey.
Here.
Mr. Hicks.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Landis.
Here.
Ms. Mellon.
Here.
Ms. Harry.
Here.
Mr. Stewie is absent and Mayor Shulz is absent.
Thank you. Uh we start tonight with a presentation from um Finance Director Richard Jude on the second quarter fiscal status update.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Uh this again is our second quarter update. And we will uh get started with our enterprise funds, which primarily makes up our utility funds, waters, who are storm water. Uh parking and solid waste. Uh to start, I have a table here that shows um our aged accounts. You may be familiar with this from my previous presentations. Uh going across the top, it shows where our uh account balances are for utilities as of the second quarter of each of these years. Uh you'll see uh we're still showing a downward uh trend coming out of COVID. Uh with the number of properties that are leanable uh dropping down to uh fifty-four. Uh and then very notable downward to the breakout uh residential properties have have seen a significant uh redemption. Um you know, we're seeing people utilize the grant programs that are available. Um and then, you know, as payment agreements were entered into, people have made payments on those. So we're seeing that that drop down quite significantly. So we're happy to see that. Uh the next slide here is our water fund. Uh at the top, it shows our expenses for the second quarter of each year. Uh for both revenues and expenses, uh we're meeting expectations at this point in the year. Uh thirty-nine percent in expenses uh and thirty-six percent for revenue. Uh as I've mentioned in previous presentations, uh revenues and expenses are reported in the year in which they're incurred. So our revenue is generally pretty low in the first half of the year, and that'll pick up towards the end of the year. Uh also, I wanted to note that um while council adopts the budget by fund and we're meeting that expectation for the water fund. They also uh adopt the budget by department. And while it's not shown here, each of the departments is within expectation of of where we want them to be at this point in the year. Uh the other revenue uh line item there has seen a decrease. Uh last year, we had uh more significant uh tapping fee revenue due to construction progress. Projects that were going on uh and you know, that's not something that we expect to have every year. So we're still in line with expectations, but that is a little bit of a dip there. Our storm water fund, a similar story, uh both uh revenues and expenses are meeting expectations. At forty-four percent of the budget for expenses and thirty-five percent of the budget for revenues. Uh and then in terms of the revenue, same story uh with higher revenues expected later in the year. Our sewer fund, um same story as water and storm water, meeting expectations with thirty-five percent. Uh of expenses compared to the budget. Uh and then departments are meeting each of their line items at this point in the year. Uh I did want to point out in terms of revenue, we're showing a slightly lower figure than we've seen in previous years. Uh fully expect that to recover. What that is related to is a delay in billing for our intermunicipal partners. Um we contract with an accountant that kind of allocates some of our uh shared expenses. And they are working to finalize some of those which we would have normally had at this point in the year. So once we get those, we expect it to reflect similar to water and be back on track. Our solid waste fund, uh as you recall, we modified it this year. This is pretty much an in and out account. So a lot of the line items that you would see under expenses and revenues are now zero. Uh with the primary expenses being the cost to uh pay for the trash collection service. And the revenues that we pulled in that offset that cost. Uh the discrepancy between the two, which you would expect to be fairly equal, is our buyback program. Uh early in the year, we were buying back a lot of trash bags and trash tags. We've seen a decline in that at this point. Most of the people have, who were gonna participate, have. Uh and then at the very bottom down there on the right, I just put a little bit of statistics as to our tag sales at this point in the year. Um last quarter, we saw six thousand six hundred tags sold. Um and then in the second quarter, that dropped significantly. I think the expectation in that first quarter is people didn't really know, you know, fully understand the project, so they were trying to buy tags and. Follow their old system, and I think people are getting the hang of it now, so we're seeing that decline. The slight decrease in the dwelling units uh there is uh really an effort on the part of. Uh the codes department going through any disputes uh that people may have with the number of units that we're charging. Uh as they clear those, we're correcting that, and so we have seen a slight decrease to get to a more accurate figure. Our parking fund, uh meeting expectations, expenses are slightly less um than than normal. Uh we have lower maintenance expenses than last year. Last year, we had quite a large expense for uh our elevator. And you know, just that factor alone has helped, you know, save some of that money. Uh our EV chargers are nearing completion. If you have been to our garage, you'll see them installed. Uh but they're still taped off at this point. Um what we expect in the August workshop. Uh is to come forward to council and propose uh some rates, talk about what it is gonna cost us to operate that. And provide that service, so expect that in in August, and then hopefully shortly thereafter, we'll get it up and running. Uh revenues, slightly lower, um you know, we're still working on our meters. Um we're having some difficulty with um you know, the batteries. Uh and at this point, we're seeing a dip in revenue for that. It's still in line with the fact that our expenses are lower, so not not a whole lot of concern at this point. But it's something that, you know, we keep, you know, at the front of our priorities in terms of the parking fund to try to get a solution in place for. Those meters. Our general fund, uh this is primarily tax-supported. Uh is meeting expectations. Right now, we're at thirty-seven percent uh expenses compared to budget. Our debt service has seen a decrease, as mentioned previously. That is primarily related to the fact that we uh made a one-time tax increment financing payment last year. Uh we didn't see that similar payment this year. Uh departments are all within expectations at this point of the year, uh so we're happy to see that. Uh revenues, the largest revenue there is our real property taxes. At this point, we've collected ninety-two percent of our budget, uh which is within expectations and historically. So typically with the general fund, we'll collect most of our revenue in the beginning, uh and then we'll start spending that money throughout the rest of the year. Uh the licenses and permits are staying in line with last year, but a shift of the reason. Uh with our rental inspection program starting, we're seeing an increase in revenue. But also seeing a decrease in uh building permits that have been issued. Um with less construction going on than la- compared to last year, uh it kind of balanced out, so right now we're kind of seeing similar performance. This slide here is just a summary of each of the columns, uh each of the funds, to kind of give you an idea overall where we're at. Uh the the utility accounts, they're all showing a net loss at this point, but again, revenue is gonna uh pick up towards the end of the year. And should should have put us back within expectations. That's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you. It's always uh informative and helpful for us to plan out our budgets throughout the year. Uh do we have any comments or questions? Okay, you're off the hook. Thank you so much, Richard. All right, uh we're moving on to opportunity for citizens and visitors to be heard. Uh members of the public and visitors may address Borough Council at this time on specific issues of concern relating to borough government. Do we have anyone here in Borough Hall that is interested? Secretary Stone, do we have any uh one-on-one Zoom? Okay, moving on. Uh we will um entertain a motion uh for uh approval of the consent agenda. Uh the following is a list of routine items which appear to be controversial in nature and which probably do not require additional discussion. It can be acted on by one motion in the current form if discussion is desired on any particular item. Any member of council or the public may request the item to be removed from the consent agenda, and that item will be considered separately. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, uh any discussion, any? Uh all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. And so that takes care of the white sheets, if you're following along on your agenda, so we are moving on to purple. We have one um tabled continued and recurring item. We have one item um on June eighth, twenty twenty-three, Borough Council tabled the following request. To waive preliminary plans and approve the final land development plan submitted by Prime AE Group. On behalf of Rabbit Transit to develop a bus garage facility at sixteen oh one Britner Highway. Uh do we have a motion to remove that from the table?
I move we remove it from the table.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Uh all those in favor of removing that from the table, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, motion passes. We will return to this item um in section D under our sustainability. Uh and community planning area, so we will come back to that. Reports from elected officials, uh nothing under Mayor's report that I'm aware of. Only the deputy. Um uh so we're gonna move on to reports from committees, uh budget and finance.
I'll I'll take this one. Uh I'll make a motion. The Borough Council may approve a resolution authorizing staff to apply for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania multimodal grant. From the Commonwealth Financing Authority in the amount uh up to two million dollars for the construction of a shared youth pa- use path. And other safety enhancements along Noble Boulevard.
We have a motion for uh applying for a Mul- uh Pennsylvania multimodal grant. Uh do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion on this item?
I just wanna add, um I'm absolutely thrilled. I could not be more thrilled uh about uh the work that's gone in, the thoughtful work to go put in to this proposal. I think it's exactly a template of the sorts of things that we will continue to do to reflect. The priorities of the community that that want a more walkable state um borough where that they can can get around. Um exactly as the grant says, in a multimodal configuration, so um I couldn't think of a better spot in the world. To roll this out and appreciate everyone putting this together. I really look forward to working with you all. You've already put some really great ideas for us to consider. I I think it looks really. Really good as is. We may have a few tweaks going along the way, but it's it's great. I appreciate it very much.
Any other comments? And I echo uh your sentiment, and it's also been wonderful to see how it's evolved from a simple tweak to what we were planning. To waiting a year and trying to really capitalize on it um in the best possible way. So kudos to everyone that made uh that grant um application possible. Um so we have a motion and a second. Um all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh opposed? Motion passes.
That adds my court.
Thank you. Uh moving on to ERCP, uh I will take these. I make the motion that Borough Council appoint Mr. Marvin Sol- Marvin Salzman. To a first four-year term on the Parks and Recreation Board. This term will become immediate, will become immediately and shall expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Uh is there any discussion on this item?
Just to say that he is so amazingly well qualified. We're we were lucky to find him, um and I look forward to serving with him.
Uh yes, Kate and I had a lovely discussion with uh with Marvin, and um I was wowed by how much he's already done. Without an official uh designation, so I I truly can't um have picked a better person. So I hope you uh, everyone enjoys his um addition to the to the Parks and Recreation Board. So we have a motion and a second. Um all those uh in favor, um please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, aye, opposed? Uh motion passes. Uh and my second item for the night is um make the motion that Borough Council approve policies and procedures. For the live streaming and recording of meetings. Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh we have a motion and a second. Uh do we have any discussion on this item? Okay, uh all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh opposed? Motion passes. And that completes my report on to Public Works.
Um so I have a few items on the the agenda tonight. Um I make a motion for council to authorize its solicitor to advertise the draft ordinance amending. The Code of the Borough of Carlisle with respect to Chapter two one two. Solid waste and recyclables, removing the requirement to use biodegradable paper bags for leaf collection and allowing residents to rake leaves to the curb.
We have a motion, sorry, maybe paraphrase. Um to advertise and draft an ordinance amending the code Borough of Carlisle with respect to Chapter two one two. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion has been uh seconded. Do we have any discussion on this item? Okay, uh all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Um I make a motion for council to approve the purchase of uh flockulation mixers. For the Carlisle Water Treatment Plant from Piers Water Company Incorporated of Harleysville, PA. For a cost of seventy-six thousand six hundred two dollars through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Cooperative Purchasing Program.
Uh we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh do we have any discussion on the motion for uh purchase of mixers for the Carlisle Water Treatment Plant? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, um I make a motion for council to award the unit price construction contract for the twenty twenty-three thermoplastic road markings. Project, the lowest responsive responsive bidder, Traffic Lines Incorporated of Farmingdale, New Jersey. In the amount of forty-one thousand two hundred seventy-three dollars and sixty cents. Pending receipt of the required bonds and insurance certificate for the project.
We have a motion for uh awarding the unit price con- construction con- contract for the thermoplastic road markings project. Uh do we have a second?
Second.
Uh motion has been uh seconded. Um do we have any discussion on this item?
Just a comment. Um and again, I'd like to send my appreciation to Public Works. Uh my guess is if you queued up all the things you were gonna do in the next few years, this would not have gone up as high as it did here. So um on behalf of all the bicyclists who get a little bit nervous when they run over a uh a bicycle. Symbol that's sort of faded away, we we appreciate it. Like to think it might save an accident, maybe more importantly, a life, who knows? But I think it's safe to say this will um improve our safety margin, and I appreciate you making this a higher priority.
Thank you. I appreciate that as well, and I have also um slightly unrelated, but I have seen that we've had our uh folks out there. Uh painting um our crosswalks, and I appreciate that marking as well. Thank you. Um any other discussion on this item? All right, uh the motion has been properly seconded. Uh all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, um for my fourth item, uh make a motion for council to award the lump sum construction contract. For the twenty twenty-three Bedford Street Traffic Calming Project to the lowest responsive bidder. Road Gerald and Company of Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, in the amount of one hundred ninety-nine. Ninety-nine thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars pending receipt of the required bonds and insurance certificates for the project.
We have a motion uh for awarding the lump sum construction contract for the twenty twenty-three Bedr- Bedford Street Traffic Calming Project. Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh we have a um properly seconded. Do we have any discussion on this item? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh opposed? Motion passes.
And for my last item tonight, um I move that Borough, I mean that council authorize the execution of a new force count agreement. With Norfolk Southern Railway Company that addresses modifications to public and railroad infrastructure within lands of the railroad. Needed for the Carlisle Connectivity Road Improvement Project and voids the previous force account agreement executed January fourth, twenty nineteen.
We have a motion to authorize the execution of a new force account agreement with Norfolk Southern Railway Company. Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh motion has been properly seconded. Do we have any other discussion on this item? Okay, uh all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh opposed? Motion passes.
And that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you. Uh and finally, we're coming up with um sustainability and community planning.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I um, since we removed the item from the table, I have three items this evening. Um the first one will be the table, the item removed from the table. I move that uh council consider waiving preliminary plans and approving the final land development plan submitted. Or submitted by Prime uh AE Group on behalf of Rabbit Transit to develop a bus uh garage facility. At sixteen oh one Britner Highway, subject to acceptance and satisfactory resolution of the conditions imposed by staff. And alternative condition C as outlined below. Um sidewalks on the subject lot frontage of Britner Highway pursuant to section two twenty-three dash four three. Of the Code of the Borough of Carlisle. And secondly, the requirement for recreation facilities shall be waived upon the applicant's written request pursuant to section two twenty-six. Dash one four of this document.
Uh so we have a motion for Borough Council to consider the preliminary plans and land development. Uh for Rabbit Transit um with the uh conditions um imposed by staff and alternate condition C. Um I will second that motion.
Can I make one remark?
Yes.
Um so the motion was to consider waiving, I think that was what was said, and I think you want to actually waive. So just to be clear for your minutes and everything, you should be voting to waive, but I think that's the intent behind the motion.
Can you make the um, should should Counselor Hicks amend that motion by simply stating that it is? Okay.
Yeah, um I request council amend the motion to uh consider waiving. The uh preliminary plans based on the updated alternatives listed.
So you would change it from consider to actually waiving?
Uh correct.
Okay, uh so I will second the amended motion saying that we are uh Borough Council. Um uh the motion to Borough Council to waive preliminary plans and approving the final land development. Plan uh submitted by Prime AE Group. Um uh I have some discussion on this, but I'm also opening up for other folks. We tabled this last month because we had a couple of questions. Um uh our um staff worked with uh the uh development folks. To address some of the questions that we had, and there were a couple of proposals, so the, sorry, wanna be um. Uh item this in the amended motion is alternative condition C. And so I will just note what alternative condition C is. Um and that is, uh we are, the question last time had to do with um specifically a lot about uh in uh installing a sidewalk. In front of this area, which would help with the connectivity of Britner Highway um for pedestrians. So alternative condition C, um applicant, the applicant shall provide sidewalks on the subject block frontage of Britner Highway. Pursuant to section two twenty-three dash four three. Um and uh the requirement for recreational facility shall be waived upon um. The applicant's written request pursuant to section two twenty-six fourteen. Um so the request um was entertained, and so it would allow them to put in the sidewalk and make sure that everything is legal. And um I believe that uh it um it takes care of my concern. But I wasn't sure if anyone else had any other comments or thoughts.
Uh I'll just, my my interpretation of of this is that it was requested to be added. Because I, I'm not sure alternative condition A was the most favorable for for them. So I think, I think it just provides an either, it it is my impression that. Uh builder will probably choose one or the other to comply, which is, which is fine, which was, I think, our intent. Um which I'm comfortable with that, so.
Uh is there any other comment or discussion on this item? Okay, uh we have a uh motion which has been amended and I think is accurate now. And it's been seconded. Um all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Um yes, and the next item is I uh move that council consider a letter of support request from First Evangelical Church. And Safe Harbor for a variance proposed with create a non-conforming lot with non-conforming building setbacks. And waiving all of the requirements of the Borough subdivision ordinance for the proposed lot division of an existing developed parcel known. As one thirty-two East High Street, Carlisle subject, Carl's, East High Street, Carlisle, subject to the approval of a variance by the zoning hearing board.
We have a motion for Borough Council to uh consider a letter of support uh request. From First Evangelical Church and Safe Harbor um for a variance proposal. Uh I will second that item. Do we have, we have, I think, some folks here that would be able to give us a bit more information. Hand it over, um uh title, name, and.
Sure, thanks. Hubert Gilroy Martin Law Offices on behalf of the applicants for that zoning variance. Which are First Evangelical Lutheran Church and Safe Harbor. We have reps from both entities here. Uh I had sent a uh a sketch in to Susan and to Keith today. Obviously, they're not here, so if anybody needs to, I can show you which parcel we're talking about. So the church owns everything in blue and what they want to sell will be little parcel, parcel, right? They own that, so they own the whole thing, you know, to subdivide that. The plan is to convey it to Safe Harbor. Uh it's a contribution to Safe Harbor, and Safe Harbor will then use it in conjunction with its mission. Uh we're here because this property was on its own and in violation of many orders just to begin with. The church bought it because it was right there. The church surrounds it. When the church did some financing, for some reason, the bank said, do a deed of consolidation and consolidate all your property. And now to unconsolidate, we need all these variances, so we're not changing anything. It's gonna be the same. And our position is it's just good for the church, good for Safe Harbor, and good for the community, keep three residential units in play. And like I said, we have Scott Shewell and uh David Simms here uh to answer any questions for the church of Safe Harbor. And like I said, we have Scott Shul and David Simon is here to answer any questions for the church of Safe Harbor.
Do we have additional questions?
No questions. Thank you, Mr. Gilroy. I did talk with Mr. Shul earlier this week about it. The what what we're essentially asking is for the the plot to be put back where it was before in it in its zoning. So we're not asking for a new zone to be created. And because it's a historic house, we obviously can't move it and create setbacks. You three were not here last week when we had a presentation from the United Way, me, talking about the acute shortage of affordable housing in the community and asking council to think about this issue front and center as we make decisions moving forward. So it's timed perfectly for you to be here. I don't see any reason why we wouldn't give our full support to, in a letter of support for for these variances for the zoning board.
May I, there are comments?
No, I I agree with you. I think the timing is perfect. Have, we've been having conversations. I just had one yesterday with a cousin, and he was telling me his ex-wife. Her rent went up another three hundred dollars on top of what she was already paying, which which is now it's like twelve hundred dollars a month. I think she's paying for her place. Fortunately, she is able to afford it because of the work that she does, but there's a lot of people who can't. And there needs to be more affordable housing. So yes, I think that this is great. And your timing is absolutely perfect. Hopefully, we get some more news like this. It it makes it, makes me feel good about that, so.
I fully support this. I, just for people keeping score. So we have this option of either supporting it, having no comment, or not supporting it. And so that we will be voting on a a letter of support, as I understand it. Okay, just to clarify.
No, this is great. Any any project Safe Harbor does has my complete confidence, so thanks.
Yes, I was actually able to attend the groundbreaking yesterday for Safe Har- Harbor Village, which, I mean, I knew it wasn't undertaking, but I really got to get the understanding of just what kind of undertaking it took to get that through. And I will just say, I understand we have ordinances for valid reasons, but they do change over time. So simultaneously, we are having meetings every two weeks on looking at zoning reform because of this exact sort of issue. We have a historic, like downtown town, and some some of these requirements, setbacks and other things can also really limit and put us in a bind. So I don't think we send these letters very often, so it's not like we're really trying to skew the great work of the zoning hearing board. But this is something that we care deeply about, affordable housing, and not thwarting the opportunities when they come here within the borough. Because the Safe Harbor Village is a, is just in South Middleton Township, but it's Carlisle too. You know, like we already, boundaries are only what, you know, municipalities really see. People don't always see those lines. And I think that that's really great that that we can support something as well. So I have full support of that as well. So we have a motion and a second. And I will call the question then. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And my last item is I move that council accept a certified local government grant award for twenty thousand dollars to fund a survey of architectural resources subject to the Borough Solicitor's Review and approval of all associated documents.
We have a motion to accept a certified local government grant award of twenty thousand dollars, and I will second that motion. Do we have any discussion on this item? Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
That concludes my.
Okay, so we're on to new business. This is your second option to have citizens who would like to address council on any matter relating to borough government. Anyone in the town hall? Anyone on Zoom? No, no one on Zoom. That's all right. Thank you.
I did, I did want to thank our substitute solicitor for being here. Turns out we didn't need him as much as we might have thought we would. I always appreciate you coming in.
Thank you for also dealing with my co-, you know, my need of coaching from sitting in as mayor tonight. Okay, we're gonna go on to reports from council members and staff. We'll start with councilman.
I'd just like to say I was out and about in the borough on Saturday, and we had a very successful Bluegrass and the Grass Festival, as well as successful Amani Festival. So congratulations to everyone who worked hard to get those to to succeed. Appreciate all the work that people do for community events. And speaking of community events, tomorrow and Saturday, United Way and Project Share Together are holding an event called Fill the Bus. We are collecting school supplies for kids in need who cannot afford them, which will later be distributed at an event in mid-August at the Expo Center. So tomorrow and Saturday, I believe it's ten AM to six PM, you'll see folks outside the doors of the Walmart collecting school supplies. They'll hand you a list of things that we need, or you can go onto the website for the event, either on the United Way website or Project Share's website, and you can see how you can donate straight from the comfort of your living room as well. So thanks.
Nothing, thanks.
So I already said that I attended the Safe Harbor Groundbreaking. I will just note that I'm on our consent agenda. I didn't want to call it out because I don't even worry that I was gonna have a problem with it. I never have a problem with it, and that's the annual Halloween parade, and we agreed to have it again this year, and it is October twenty-fifth. Staging starts at six, parade starts at seven. Mark calendars. It's my favorite.
All right, nothing tonight, thanks.
I have nothing tonight either.
Oh, and you've been very quiet in your, anything from staff? Okay, Solicitor Wakefield, anything? Okay, great. Well, that seems to adjourn our meeting for tonight. Thank you for attending.